I'd like to call to order the regular meeting for September 10th, 2018. Please join Councilmember Laurentano in the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation and remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, as we approach this anniversary of 9/11, please give comfort to those that lost loved ones on that fateful day. Please give comfort and remembrance to those that still serve, even though they've been afflicted by illnesses from 9/11. Dear Lord, we ask that you watch over our city. We ask that you watch over those that serve us every day. And we ask that you watch over our military and also prayers for their family, as many of them serve abroad. Dear Lord, we ask for healing for those that are sick and for our loved ones, and that they recover well. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Laurentano. Mayor Lord is not present with us this evening. Is there a motion and a second to excuse Mayor Lord?
So moved. Second.
It has been moved by Councilmember Pazillo and seconded by Councilmember Hampton to excuse Mayor Lord. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. City Manager has a statement.
Thank you. I have a statement provided by Mayor Lord that I'd like to read. By now you may have heard that from September 5th to September 9th, 2018, I was under the care of Abrazo West Campus' most amazing team of talented and caring cardiologists, nurses, hospital technicians, and staff. I am happy to say that after a thorough series of tests and procedures, my heart is now at full capacity thanks to a new pacemaker. As mayor, this experience gave me a unique inside look at the people who keep our citizens healthy. My heart is full of gratitude at the marvelous team of Goodyear's Fire Department Emergency Responders, as well as Abrazo Hospital's nurses and heart specialists who tended to my every need and concern. I will need a bit of time to restore my energy and will limit my calendar during this time. I look forward to getting back to the full responsibilities of mayor once I have gained full strength. In the meantime, Goodyear is in capable hands of Vice Mayor Wally Campbell, the council, and the city staff to cover as needed.
Thank you. And we wish Mayor Lord our love and our best wishes, and we look forward to her returning quick. We have one communication this evening. Council will receive an update on the annual Ballet Under the Stars event being held on September 14th, 2018, at the Estrella Lakeside Amphitheater. Arts and Culture Coordinator Guileen Ostlinski shall present.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. I'm very happy to be here with you this evening to share some highlights about our upcoming event Ballet Under the Stars. Ballet Under the Stars is this Friday evening, September 14th. It will be held at the beautiful Estrella Lakeside Amphitheater. And the event is in its seventh year. We've hosted this event here with Ballet Arizona. We're very fortunate to have them back here. We hold the unique distinction this year of being the only West Valley venue where they are holding a Ballet Under the Stars performance. The event is from 5:30 to 8:30 with Ballet Arizona taking the stage at 7:00 PM. We have some great activities planned, though, prior to the ballet performance beginning. We have six food vendors with snacks and treats and entrees if people would like to come out and enjoy a dinner out in the lawn. We also have the Goodyear Arts and Culture Commission is sponsoring free face painting. We have Estrella Foothills High School Art Club and the West Valley Arts Council coming out to do some great fun activities, art activities with kids. And then we also have some of the home builders that are up there in the Estrella community are going to have some booths and some great giveaways to give to the residents. We have David Weekly Holmes, William Ryan, Lennar. They'll all be on hand to join in our festivities. One of the great things about Ballet Under the Stars is Ballet Arizona has a program called Class Act. And prior to this performance, they have gone out to Estrella Mountain Elementary School, and they've been working with the third graders there, teaching them a dance number. And those kids will be taking the stage with the professional dancers that evening. And that's always really a delight to get to see those children up on this large stage performing for this crowd of 3,000 to 4,000 people. These events are not possible without our partnerships. One being, of course, Ballet Arizona, who brings this free ballet out to our community, equipped with the lighting, the costumes, and these professional dancers that dance for their company. We also need to thank our partner with Newland Communities. Without them, we wouldn't have this beautiful venue, the Estrella, the Lakeside Amphitheater, to be able to host this event, which is a beautiful backdrop for the evening. And last but not least, of course, our Arts and Culture Commission. Their work, their recommendations, and their direction for Goodyear Arts and Culture really elevates us, and it really does improve the quality of life for our residents. And I really want to thank them for all of their work. With that, that concludes my presentation, and I do hope I get to see you all at the ballet Friday night.
Thank you very much, and I certainly hope that all of our residents will come out for this exciting event. Bring your lawn chairs and your blankets and enjoy an evening under the stars. Thank you, Guileen.
Thank you.
Now is it time for citizens who would like to address the city council on any non-agenda item? Are there speaker cards?
Yes, Vice Mayor. Daniela Bohmini?
Thank you. The council will listen to comments and may take any one of the following. Respond to criticism. Request that staff investigate and report the matter. Request that the matter be scheduled on a future agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. The yellow light in the buzzer will let you know you have 30 seconds left to speak. Before you begin to speak, please identify yourself clearly stating for the record your name and address.
Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Daniela Bohmini. I represent Columbia College, and we are located on 250 North Leachville Park, Leachville Road, Goodyear, 85338. So I would like to thank you, the Vice Mayor, for the opportunity to be here tonight, and councilmembers, which some of them I had the opportunity to meet before through our presentation in the month of August. Although we are new to the Goodyear area, I did have some conversations before this meeting to know that some of you are familiar with Columbia College, which is located in Goodyear, but initially in Columbia, the state of Missouri. We are actually an institution that began working in 1851, and it was designed for girls only. And it was for girls only until 1970, when we became co-ed. That happened because many of our, the guys that were going at the time to the Missouri University had the girls, and they wanted for them to actually go to school. In general, Columbia College brings into Goodyear the possibility of working with several companies and organizations that are already working in here. Some of those that we already met and are working with are, for example, Cancer Treatment Centers of America, Abrazo West Campus, Banner Estrella, Sonora Quest Laboratories, the Southwest Valley Chamber of Commerce and its affiliate members, Agua Fría School District, the Arizona Charter School Association, Goodwill, Luke Air Force Base, the Southwest YMCA, and the Maricopa Community Colleges, with all their 10 community colleges. With this, by the way, it took 16 months of working through an agreement to have the community college students the possibility of transferring their credits completely and fully to Columbia College to continue on with their bachelor's degree. We are and have the same accreditation as ASU, GCU, and ABU, U of A. So we are through the Higher Counseling Association. And the community colleges allow their students to participate in this. We are already making the fairs and participating through the community colleges. The Mayor Lord invited some colleges to come. We answered the call, and for that reason, we are here in Goodyear, Arizona. I am the happy person to actually be the representative for Columbia College in Arizona. And you will see me around. I will be talking to the community, speaking with everyone, and having everyone any questions answered if they have to. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much, and we're delighted to have Columbia College in Goodyear, and thank you for all your work.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Will the city clerk please read the consent agenda by title only?
6.1, Approval of Minutes. 6.2, Rescind the November 13, 2006 Final Plat Approval and Approve the Final Plat for Sadea Parcel 2C. 6.3, Approve a Request for a Re-Plat of Province at Estrella Mountain Ranch Parcel 2, Cantomea. 6.4, Adopt Resolution Number 2018-1895 Approving the Purchase Agreement for the Sale of 120 East Western Avenue. Authorizing and directing the city manager or her designee to take actions and execute documents and providing for an effective date. 6.5, Accept the Dedication of a Non-Exclusive Permanent Access and Utility Easement Agreement from NNP 3, Estrella Mountain Ranch LLC. 6.6, Adopt Resolution Number 2018-1897 Establishing the Judicial Selection Ad Hoc Committee. Providing for the Termination of the Judicial Selection Ad Hoc Committee, Adopting Bylaws for the Judicial Selection Ad Hoc Committee, Authorizing the City Manager and/or Appropriate Staff to Take All Actions Necessary to Carry Out the Intent of the Resolution and Establishing an Effective Date. 6.7, Accept the Dedication of Three Declariations of Affirmative and Restrictive Covenants and Easements. 6.8, Grant a Temporary Construction and Access Easement to Estrella Van Buren Properties, Inc.
Does anyone on council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Hampton and seconded by Councilmember Pazillo to approve the consent agenda. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell? Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Laurentano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pazillo?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Motion is passed. I would like to announce that Item 7.3 on the business has been postponed and will be rescheduled at a later date. And I would like to remind council to please refrain from asking questions until the staff presentations are complete and there is a motion on the table. 7.1, The First Item of Business is to Consider Adopting Resolution Number 2018-1900 Approving a Job Creation Agreement for Anderson Regional Manufacturing Incorporated. Interim Economic Development Director Harold Stewart and Economic Development Project Manager Harry Paxton will present.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of the council.
Good evening.
It's my privilege tonight to present to you the proposed agreement for Anderson Regional Manufacturing, which is a division of a company we all know well. Everyone probably knows Anderson Windows and Doors. And so we're fortunate to have several individuals actually here tonight. A couple individuals from the company representing the company. We have Ben Adamson. Before I get into my presentation, I would like to introduce them. He's the Senior Director of Supply Chain Integration and Manufacturing Operations.
Can he raise his hand? Where is he?
Yes.
Behind the pole?
Also, we have Linda Larson, who is the Director of Real Estate Services with the company. Does anyone want to raise their hand? Okay. And then also Betty McIntosh, who is the Senior Managing Director with the Cushman and Wakefield, who worked on the site selection process for this company. And then we're fortunate also to have Mitchell Allen here with us with the Greater Phoenix Economic Council, who worked with us as we recruited this company to our community. So Anderson Corporation is an international manufacturer of windows and doors, and they're headquartered in Bayport, Minnesota. They're the largest window and door manufacturer in North America. And they have manufacturing in U.S., Canada, and Italy. And this year, they're celebrating 115 years in business since 1903. And in that 115 years, they've done a lot of different things, have been a very innovative company with over 100 patents to their name. And we're fortunate that one of the products, that cross-section there you see of the window and the window frame is one of their newest innovations, in which it's a product called Fibrex, which is a composite that's two times stronger than vinyl windows. And also has a great quality where it doesn't, where it basically blocks the thermal transfer, so it doesn't heat up like an aluminum window frame. So, and then also there, further to the right, you can see the picture of an example of some of their windows and doors that they'll be manufacturing here in our community. So to give you a little background as to the process in working with Anderson. So in March of 2008, Anderson shortlisted sites in Goodyear. And a final site, we were also competing with a location in Nevada. And also, there was some consideration for their locations here in the Phoenix Valley. So staff worked with several of our partners, as we always do, to bring about this proposal to you tonight with Arizona Commerce Authority, the Greater Phoenix Economic Council. And then this time, we also worked with Wesmac, which played a key part as, in fact, Ben was on these meetings where we met with Wesmac and talked about different training programs that they could provide. And then also, our local employers played a key part as they did their workforce analysis. They met with several of our key manufacturers and other employers in our community, which really turned out well and helped move the ball forward for Goodyear. So in July of 2018, Anderson made this decision to locate in Goodyear, and they're currently under contract with Opus Development, who owns the greater portion of the Goodyear Crossing Industrial Park. And they're also under contract with Opus to develop the Phase 1 building of 546,000 square feet. Anderson may also decide in the future to construct a Phase 2, which would almost be a mirror image of what Phase 1 is planned. So another 500,000 square feet and potentially almost the same number of jobs as well. So the location of the facility is the southeast corner of South Cotton Lane and West Commerce Drive. Here's an image of about 68 acres there. So their first phase of their development is planned to be actually that immediate northeast corner of MC85 and South Cotton Lane with that 546,000 square foot building. You see, that's just west of the building that Blue Buffalo just recently leased that was constructed and developed by Opus Development. So the provisions pertaining to Anderson Corporation that are in this proposed agreement tonight that you're considering is to create up to 415 full-time positions, which would make them one of the largest manufacturers in our community. Paying full-time positions an annual wage of at least $41,133, which is 125% of the county median wage. Anderson also would pay at least 65% to all full-time employees, or pay at least 65% of the healthcare benefits for all full-time employees. Invest at least $105 million in capital equipment and intend improvements in Phase 1. And Phase 2 could also include another $95 million investment and a similar number of jobs. Phase 2 is required to begin construction in this agreement no later than six years after the effective date of the agreement to take advantage of the proposed benefits of Phase 2 development. So for the city of Goodyear, those agreement provisions are to waive or reimburse 75% of all non-expedited plan, review, and permit fees up to a maximum of $1.729 million. And 100% of the expedited review fees up to $849,000, for a total of $2.579 million. That would be inclusive of Phase 1 and Phase 2. Job creation funding of $1,944 per qualified employment position. Those are the employment positions that meet that wage requirement. And estimating up to about 450 qualified employment positions through both phases. And that would be a maximum of $875,000. And the city also agrees to support the activation of a foreign trade zone site. So as required, each time we do one of these agreements and propose them to you, we always go through an economic impact analysis by a third party. So applied economics, we contracted with to estimate what the impact would be for this project, and they are significant. $969 million, .8 million in total economic impact over the next 10 years. And certainly with every project, there's increased property and sales tax revenues generated by Anderson, as well as its employees, vendors, and service providers. And that would be significant over time, especially if Phase 2 is incorporated. Phase 2 certainly would make them by square footage, as measured today, and by number of employees, if the employees are similar to Phase 1, the largest employer, manufacturing employer in our city. And then direct revenue to the city is estimated to be over $7.9 million over the next 10 years. So with that, that's the proposal that we have before you tonight. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to entertain those.
Are there any speaker cards?
No, Vice Mayor.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? Will the city clerk please read Resolution Number 2019-1900 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2018-1900 Approving authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a job creation agreement for Anderson Regional Manufacturing, Inc. Authorizing city staff to take actions consistent with terms of resolution and agreement and providing for an effective date.
May I have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Laurentano, seconded by Councilmember Hampton to approve the motion or to approve the resolution. It is now open for council discussion. Who wants to start? Okay, Joe? Excuse me, Councilmember Pazillo?
Probably a question probably for the engineering department. Do you have current staff in place to be able to process timely all their requests that is going to be coming through? Probably for Rebecca.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Councilmember. And yes, we have been working with the Economic Development Group on all of our plan review options we have available. We will actually be coming to council to discuss some of the number of plan reviews and permitting needs that we have in general. And this is another project that we're very excited to have, but do want to discuss this with city management and council.
So if I understand you correctly, you're still going to need some additional resources probably to meet this demand? Is that what I'm hearing?
It is not specifically this demand. It's an increase across the board from all of our activities that we're having.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, right. Councilmember Stip?
First, I'm going to be the first then to welcome Anderson Windows. I'm a former customer back in Illinois. Great product, and very glad you're here and appreciate the investment that you're making. Do want to also thank staff for the work bringing this forward. I know that this has been a long time in coming. And for the public, this is not the first time we've heard of this, we've heard this information. We've had a couple of discussions about it previous to this, so there may not be a lot of in-depth questions from council because we've already done that during the negotiation phase. So I just wanted to thank everybody.
Councilmember Keno?
I would like to echo the welcome for Anderson to coming into our community. I know that you have a long and strong history of being good corporate citizens and environmental stewards, and we appreciate that, that you're in community engagement, and we appreciate that facet that you will bring to Goodyear as well.
Councilmember Laurentano?
You're going to hear this probably a couple more times. Welcome to Goodyear. We are very glad to have you here. It's a wonderful company, obviously over 100 years old, over a century old. And so we're really glad, and thank you for choosing Goodyear as your home. So, welcome.
Councilmember Hampton?
Yeah, same thing. Thank you so much for looking at Goodyear and choosing us. And I think we'll be good partners going forward as well. We're excited to have you here and look forward to working with you going forward in community events and otherwise. And also, I mean, working with Columbia College too and everybody else, helping out your employers and employees and continuing their education as well. So, yeah, thank you. Looking forward to working with you.
Well, I echo everything my councilmembers have said, but we're just so delighted that you have come to Goodyear. You picked the best city in the West Valley to locate, only Goodyear. So thank you so much. But honestly, when I think of windows, I only think of Anderson. I don't know that there's another company. I've heard Anderson all my life. I have Anderson dual-pane windows. I love them. I don't know if I love them if I had to replace them, but I love them now. But thank you so much. We're just delighted that you're here. Thank you for coming tonight to our council meeting. It's important that we put out the red carpet for you because we're going to be good stewards with you, and we appreciate all that you bring to us, and we will continue to cooperate. To our wonderful staff that put this project together and everyone involved, thank you so very much. We know that we've got the best city to locate in, and we just need to sell it and move on. So thank you so much. And with that, we will ask for a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Laurentano?
Aye.
The motion carries.
So carried. Thank you again. Thank you, Harry, for the excellent presentation. Oh, certainly. I'd love for you to say a word. I'm so sorry. I was hoping you would just jump up and...
Cheer a little bit?
Yay!
No, well, hello and good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
My name is Ben Adamson. I'm the Senior Director of Supply Chain Integration. And on behalf of Anderson Corporation, we want to thank the city of Goodyear for just strong support of our project. So we're extremely excited to be here tonight. We are excited and energized to really join this community as we really embark on this big endeavor for us, which is to expand our manufacturing and distribution capacity for a very fast-growing Fibrex-based window and door product. So we've talked about going west for a long time. We're finally here tonight. It feels really, really good. We are a 115-year-old value-based company, and we really, we are fully committed to our vision and our mission. And our mission is very simple. It's to make the world a better place by living up to the promise that everyone that benefits from their association with Anderson. So when we think about, you know, what it takes to be an Anderson leadership team, and we have a longstanding commitment to corporate citizenship, we work tirelessly to have a positive impact on the communities in which we work and live. And we plan to exercise those values here as we get started on our journey. So as Harry mentioned, we plan to spend or invest $105 million to create 415, you know, really high-quality jobs. These are really good jobs, high-paying jobs, and really, I think, a good kind of foundational building for a family. And, you know, the city of Goodyear, the Greater Phoenix Economic Development Council, Wesmac, the state of Arizona, they've all been just phenomenal partners in helping us throughout the selection process. And we look forward to working together and really growing our manufacturing and distribution presence here in the city of Goodyear. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else want to speak? Okay. All right. 7.2, Item on Business is to Consider Adopting Ordinance 2018-1406 to Submit Charter Amendments to the Voters. Our city attorney, Warwick Massey, will be presenting.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Glad to follow an exciting item like that, charter amendments. Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council, in front of you this evening to propose three charter amendments to be referred to the voters of Goodyear. As council recalls, back in 2012, the Arizona State Legislature passed House Bill 2826, known as the Consolidated Elections Bill, that required cities that were not on the state fall of even-year election cycles to move to those cycles. As we know, we are not on that cycle. We're in spring of odd years. But a challenge was brought to that law by the cities of Tucson and Phoenix, stating that under the Arizona Constitution, cities with charters that mandated different election cycles trump state cycles trump state law. That went to the Arizona Court of Appeals, and Phoenix and Tucson prevailed in that lawsuit, and thus, Goodyear stayed on the spring of odd-year election cycles. This past year, the legislature passed House Bill 2604, so basically Consolidated Elections 2.0. Took a slightly different tact on requiring those cities that have not moved to the fall of even-year election cycles to move if your local election has voter turnout of your total registered voters that is twenty-five percent less than the previous gubernatorial election in the fall of an even year. So that would take this year's fall election cycle numbers, total voter turnout for our voters in Goodyear, and compare it to our spring cycle. If we didn't meet that threshold, we would be required to move to the fall election cycle the following even year. What's a little different about this law is that they also put, I guess, a poison pill in it, that if you're required to move and you don't move, like you were to bring another charter challenge in the court system, and were to prevail, you arguably could still have your election in an even, odd year, but the counties are no longer allowed to run your elections for you. So for us, that would create a significant difficulty, because there's no private companies that we're aware of at this point that will run an election for you. The city of Phoenix is currently looking to move their election cycle, which would conflict with our election cycles. They would be no longer able to run an election for us, and of course, the county would be prohibited. So we're in a, it creates a bit of an issue for the city. So just looking forward, we are presenting to council this evening ordinance to refer to the voters three changes to the city charter. First would be an amendment to Section Five, Article Nine, that would move the elections from the spring of odd years to the fall of even years, commencing in the year 2022. Persons in office would continue to serve until their successors are qualified, and that's consistent with the recent House bill, which did specify that cities that are impacted by the new law, their elected officials would continue to serve until the cycles sync up. I would also, the next two are also more technical corrections. Section thirteen of Article Two states that council members would now be inducted in the first meeting in the first month following the election. Our charter currently says April, which would not make any sense in the new election cycle. And we'd also amend Section Six of Article Nine, that states that candidates receiving the majority of votes cast at the primary for that subject office would be elected at the primary. Just the language that clarifies that you wouldn't take the totality of the votes cast, including the state elections, and try to make that calculation, it's just for the subject office. So it's more of a technical correction. With that, this will become effective in 2022, and then for the rest of the offices in 2024. And this would be referred, as I stated in the primary coming up next year, we would call a special election that would run concurrent with our primary election, so it'd all appear upon the same ballot. But state law requires that a charter amendment be held in a special election. If that answers any questions council may have.
Okay, thank you. Are there any speaker cards on?
No, Vice Mayor.
Okay. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this subject matter? Will the City Clerk please read ordinance number 2018-1406 by title only?
Adopt ordinance number 2018-1406, proposing and submitting amendments to the charter of the city of Goodyear. Amendment to Article Nine, Section Five of the Charter of the City of Goodyear, to change the dates of city elections to the fall of even-numbered years. Amendment to Article Nine, Section Six, providing that a candidate who receives the majority of votes cast in the primary council election shall be declared elected to office. And to Article Two, Section Thirteen, providing that inductions of the mayor and city council shall occur at the first regular meeting in January, following the date of a general election and declaring an emergency.
All right. May I have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Stip and seconded by Councilmember Pizzillo to adopt the ordinance. It's open for council discussion. Councilmember Pizzillo?
Are you saying that March will be the, this will be on the election, on the ballot in March?
Yes.
Who puts together, for the record, who puts together the language, the ballot initiative language that goes out there, and I guess, yes, no vote descriptions? Who actually produces all of that?
The ballot question is in the ordinance itself, so we've already drafted that. As far as the information pamphlet, we would work with the City Clerk's office to put that together in advance of the election.
When does all this have to be in? I assume to get to the March. Has to be in by what, January, February?
Point to the City Clerk. She's aware of those dates.
Yeah, actually, the one-hundred-and-eighty-day mark is actually this week already, so we are actually going to be coming back to council with the call of election in October, and we will actually have to have everything done and ready to the, to the Miracopa County, and that'd be the ninety days before the election, which would be December twelfth.
Ah, that's a pretty tight turnaround.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Councilmember Sherr.
And I know we've all talked about this as well, but just so the public knows, we are nonpartisan, and this is the one, one of our issues before switching it, and then that's a partisan election. It's either Republican or Democrat. How do we ensure, or what are we going to do to try to get the word out to the independents, since most of our elections are not in the general, they're usually in the primary?
Well, I think that's more of an information campaign. I point to the City Clerk, probably working with the Communications Department, because that is a valid issue when moving to the, to the fall elections, because that will be, our primary will run with the partisan primaries, so for an independent voter, as I understand it, to participate in the city election, you're going to have to request a ballot.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to...
If you're on the permanent early voting list.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to work really hard to get that word out, to make sure we don't skip people.
Yeah, because, sorry.
Councilmember Hampton?
Because, I mean, to her point, so we'd be on both ballot, right? I mean, we're nonpartisan, so we'd be on either one.
Correct. And boy, I probably didn't refer to earlier, and it wasn't clear on, you know, currently we're on an all-male ballot system, so every registered voter in Goodyear gets a primary ballot, because we're nonpartisan. We're going to be moving to the cycle, if this is approved by the voters, where our primary is going to run concurrent with the partisan primaries. So if you're an independent voter that is, you know, on the early, not on the early, early permanent, early voting list, you have to specifically request a partisan ballot in order to participate. Otherwise, you have to go to a polling place.
Yes. Councilmember Stip?
The charter is driven by the residents.
Right.
And they were very clear when they established this back in nineteen forty-six, that they wanted it off-cycle. And it is really a shame that the state legislature has chosen an opposite position of that for the charter cities, and that they wanted to impose their will on the will of the people. Should the residents of the community decide not to make the change, what is the ramification of that?
I think it's interesting at that point. We will be, ourselves with Winslow and Holbrook, are the first cities that'll come up as being immediately impacted. So likely, we would need to litigate the matter, just to have direction from the courts. We're still going to have the issue of the county clerks not being able to run the election. And frankly, if the courts strike down the rest of the statute, which it's not inconsistent with the ruling they already made in the Arizona, in the Phoenix-Tucson case, the legal theories are not any different. So the Supreme Court's changed with additional members, so we're not sure how they would rule on the matter, but the law really hasn't changed at this point. But you still have that issue that probably would survive, so you're going to figure out how you're going to administer a local election. So there's just a myriad of issues that it generates, from the legislature down to local governments.
So I, the right thing to do is send it to the voters and ask them how they want to make, how they want to amend the charter. It's unfortunate that we were forced into that situation. I think it's going to be very detrimental to local government in a whole, or as a whole, that these nonpartisan, very government-touches-people position is going to be significantly affected by the partisan politics that is currently tearing apart the country. And it's really unfortunate, but I think the right thing to do is for us to send it to the residents and ask them how they want to proceed. Thanks for the presentation.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Yeah, I agree with several parts that Councilmember Stip has mentioned, but here's the pickle I think we find ourselves in, is the fact that even if we would win it in court, we don't, we don't have the staff to run the election, and the problem would be, who would run it for us? And prior, we were hoping Phoenix would do it, because they were on a similar cycle, but since Phoenix is moving also off-cycle as a result of this law, we wouldn't have Phoenix to run it. So we would either have to book up with very expensive staffing for that period of time, train them, bring in our own machines to run that, and I don't know what that cost would be, but I suspect a hundred thousand plus, just guessing, for us to pull that off. So it's a shame that they did this. They probably figured this was the way to get us all on. And by the way, how many, how many cities or charter cities right now are actually off-cycle like us right now? Because there's what?
There's not that many left. As you reference, Tucson and Phoenix are moving, or they've got charter questions out. Tucson to move to a fall election cycle. Phoenix has got a little bit of a hybrid, but they administer their own elections. They're looking to move their primary to fall, but if they have a general, that would roll to the following spring.
I thought there was less than a handful still doing this.
It's less than ten, when you take Phoenix and Tucson out.
Okay. Yeah, I just think unfortunately, since we're nonpartisan, we're going to get dragged into that discussion when it comes to the, you know, what is it, November? And the one issue that I had, you know, concerns about is those people that are leaving. Most of our, if I'm not mistaken, the last three elections we've had, the mayor was elected on the primary, and the, we only had one council race that actually went, for over the last three years, if I'm correct, to the general, which means those people traveling out of town in August, typically for partisans, you know, they have November to vote for their specific party. Well, if the mayor is elected in August, and we only have one left, then there'll be a lot of individuals in our community that will have no say in their elected mayor, or probably two out of the three of their council members as a result of not being here, because the ballots aren't forwarded. So it's very disappointing. They put that poisonous poison pill in there, because they, in my view, they don't leave us a whole lot of choice, because we're not set up to run our own elections. And they probably knew that when they passed the law, and I wish the state legislators would have stayed out of it and let the city, as charter cities, do their own business. But unfortunately, when they got turned down, or got, went to the courts the first time, they figured, well, we're going to tell the cities how to operate, so they did it the second time. So very disappointing, but I really don't think we have any options, to be honest with you.
Councilmember Keno?
Before I was appointed, I sat in the audience for many council meetings when there was discussions about our system, and the over and under votes, and citizens questioning that, as well as our consolidated, or getting on schedule. And I know that the, we wanted the emphasis to be on Goodyear issues and Goodyear people, and I just echo the concern that that's going to be lost, because it, there's just such a loud noise affected with the state and the federal. So, you know, I hope that we can keep our Goodyear citizens engaged in the local politics and local governance as well.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, if I might. I'm assuming that we will have our primary in August and our general in November.
Correct.
And if everyone is elected in August, we're done until you swear everybody in in January? Is that correct?
That would be correct.
Okay. And then the next question is that this doesn't really start until 2022 or 2024?
That's correct.
All right. And then my last question is, how are we going to, and this may not be appropriate, how are we going to handle the all-male part when we're all male in ballots, and then we're going to be put on the county, and that's not all male? I don't know how that's going to work, and I hope that it's, that we'll be able to figure it out for our residents.
Madam Vice Mayor, we will not be able to participate in all-male ballots.
So we're done.
That'll go away.
Oh, my gosh. So that means we need to have polling places?
Yes.
Okay.
And that goes back to the...
Good luck.
The issue explained earlier, that those that, voters that typically do participate through the permanent early voting list...
Sure.
If you haven't signed up for a partisan ballot, you're going to have to specifically request one during the primary to be able to participate. Otherwise, you have to go to a polling location.
Well, we may have to do a really large educational piece for our residents to get them to understand how they will have to start voting once all of this, if they do adopt our ordinance, and they do change our charter, and we do move forward, because a lot of folks may not understand how it's going to work. I know it's very complicated, but maybe perhaps, I'm hoping that once we do it a time or two, it'll, it'll work out, since we have to do it. We don't have a choice.
We'll make sure we focus on that.
There were several that recently, when they tried it last time, converted, so it might not hurt for staff to kind of explore those cities that actually went from, you know, the March-May, and there are some of them out there, to see how they went and approached the education. So there's, there's records out there that we can actually pull on, on best practices of the do's and don'ts and the pitfalls of what they found what not to do if they were going to do it over again, so that might help us, Vice Mayor.
Oh, that's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Does anyone else have anything to say? And with that, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Laurentano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Rorick, very much, for your presentation. All right. For item seven point three, on the business to consider adopting an ordinance regarding the compensation for mayor and council members, has been postponed, and we will be rescheduled at a later date. Seven point four. The last, the last item on business is to consider approving the letter of intent for ambulance transport service. Is there a motion and a second to go into executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Pizzillo and seconded by Councilmember Hampton to go into executive session. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Laurentano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Bills, and July was thirty-five days, and so a lot of people were very concerned that the amount of the water bill was extremely higher, because the way we bill for water, obviously, is, as you use more, it's tiered up. And so having thirty-five days in one bill in the hottest month, kind of, a lot of people were very shocked when they saw their water bills. So if we could look into that and look into about getting the, if the deposits back, a couple of people had questions about the deposits for the, once they've had service for over a year, and what we do on that. That was just my question.
All right. Does anyone else have anything? All right. I have a request of the City Clerk, please. I've got a phone call this afternoon from some folks wanting to know when campaign signs were going down, and I explained to them, everybody that won the primary and were running for the general could keep their signs up, but that I honestly couldn't remember what our ordinance was. So if you might, could share that with council members, because I'm sure I'm not going to be the only one that's asked this question, because we have an awful lot of signs still up from folks who lost, and they're blowing down, and they look awful. Okay? Thank you. Does our City Manager have anything to report this evening?
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. So with regard to those two requests regarding the...
So with regard to those two requests regarding the water bill, the 35 days and the deposits for over one year, and then also the campaign sign issue, if it's acceptable, we'll gather that information and respond to council via email. As far as general updates, we did have the 9/11 memorial and pancake breakfast yesterday morning, and there was a wonderful turnout, and I know that they'll be coming back to give an official report on that event, but I wanted to acknowledge all of those who worked so hard to put that event together. It was really a nice tribute for 9/11. Also looking forward to this Friday, the ballet under the stars that Galene already shared a lot of information on. And otherwise, we look forward to officially welcoming Anderson Manufacturing to Goodyear. We'll start to see communications, press releases, working with the company as soon as tomorrow. So that's all, thank you.
Thank you. And I, I do want to say that I'm sorry I missed the 9/11 memorial services. The first one I've missed, but I was in Dallas for a family wedding. But their ceremony is so meaningful, and it's so well-done. I want to thank everyone with our fire department who had any part in putting it together, and our police department for all their hard work to memorialize that special day, which will be tomorrow. All right, our next meeting is going to be a work session on September 17th, and I'm assuming it's, it's going to start at 6:00? Am I correct? 5:00, okay, 5 o'clock work session on September 17th. There being no further business to discuss, at this time, the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all for coming.